Of the Board to order. It's Monday, August 25th. We're in the Administration Boardroom 12121, West North Avenue. We will call the meeting to order with a moment of silent reflection, please. Thank you. Dr. Eardle, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mrs. Casey?
Here.
Mrs. Fee?
Excused.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here. Thanks. Okay, we will now entertain public comment on non-agenda items. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there any public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to approval of the consent agenda. First of all, are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action?
Mrs. Randall, I request that we remove the minutes for separate discussion and action.
Which minutes, Mr. Meyer?
The minutes of the in-service that was held.
On August 11?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Or, it's a rather straightforward motion I have, so if you want to consider them as a whole with the minutes, that would be fine with me as well. Or are they separately listed here, the in-service under minutes? I thought they were listed as one.
Well, yeah, it's recommended that we approve the minutes from the regular meeting and the in-service meetings.
Okay. However you choose, if you want to take them off as one item.
Got it.
Okay.
All right, so we will have separate action on the minutes from the two Board meetings of August 11th. Any other? Okay. Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any public comment on the remainder of the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we can call the roll, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Mr. Meyer, would you like to start the discussion?
Yes, it has been our practice for a number of years that the minutes be held to formal motions and votes. And we learned long ago that it gets to be very complicated to start recapping the discussion in the minutes. It becomes a whole chain of Board members, individual Board members, trying to get the wording right to represent what they said. And in this case also, I think the follow-up action item with the Board resolution for tonight pretty much speaks to the Board's conclusions. So with that, I would like to move to amend the in-service minutes to be what would be considered the legal minimum for those minutes. They are the minutes, the initial version that Mrs. Galante had presented to the Board, and I don't see any need for discussion. I have copies of it here.
Okay.
So that is my motion, that we revert back to the originally distributed minutes for the in-service.
All right, thank you. Could I, could we have those?
Yes.
I left my laptop at home, so.
There you go.
And I'll clarify before we get a second. So, Mr. Meyer, your amendment is to remove?
To use the version that had the
Oh, okay, that's what we have here.
The legal, which is the motions and the votes.
Okay.
And that's all.
Okay.
I don't see any need for other discussion. We can't discuss as we don't have a second on the floor.
Right.
But just to explain what my motion is.
Okay. Can I have a second on Mr. Meyer's amendment?
I will second the amendment.
Thank you. And any further Board discussion?
I'll just say this complies with our regular practice that we followed for years that I tried to enforce when I was President as well.
Okay, I agree. I agree. Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I'm just a little surprised, Mrs. Randall, since you wrote the minutes while you're changing your decision now.
We're going to be voting on the amendment?
She said you agree, though. Didn't you write the minutes that were presented at the meeting tonight?
I did.
May I comment?
You know, well, no, I'll finish first. They came to me this way, and then I got a lengthy email from you objecting to the minutes. So I tried to put something in there that spoke to your objections. And Mr. Meyer is right, we shouldn't do that because then you said, and he said, and I said, so.
Point of order, there's a motion seconded for the original minutes. And we've fallen into a discussion of now of the reasons for the minutes that were put on the agenda by the President, and that's a different conversation.
Yeah, I was responding to Mr. Croner's question.
I understand, I understand. I'm just trying to keep this
I agree.
Very tidy and not, you know, if
Yes. Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. Any other comments?
Um.
Mrs. Casey?
I have no problem if this is adhering to, you know, Board practice.
Yes, it is.
And I support that then.
Okay. Community comment?
It was my experience that while President, that the burden on the President to traffic cop Board member requests for changes in addition to the minutes to reflect various statements represented during the meeting becomes a very untenable thing. That now you are basically getting into a debate off-record over content of the minutes. There's difficulty to maintain balance. You wonder whether all of the Board members were noticed, that there is this discussion going on so that anybody has the same opportunity to be sure their views are accurately and precisely and with proper balance presented. It gets to be a big fiasco, which is why, long before I was President, while I believe Mrs. Weber was President, we decided to go to this, just the legal requirements for the minutes.
Okay. Mr. or Dr. Eardle, could you call the roll, please? We are voting on the amendment to accept the original version of the minutes that Mr. Meyer handed out.
If the amendment passes, then we will need to vote on the underlying agenda item. And if the amendment fails, we need to vote on the underlying agenda.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so everybody knows what we're voting on. It's the original draft of the minutes from the August 11th in-service meeting. Dr. Eardle, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Motion passes five to one. Okay, now we, let's see, now we did everything else.
Now we have to vote on the, we vote again.
Minutes.
On the minutes.
Got it.
Right?
Yes.
Just trying to help.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any further discussion on the minutes of the regular School Board meeting? Any public comment on any of the minutes? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Eardle?
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. And that motion passes five to one also. Thank you. Okay, we have our first action item from the Teaching and Learning Department. Mrs. Milfeld, please.
Yes, thank you. There are policy revisions. It is recommended that the School Board approve revisions to six policies as presented and discussed at the August 11th meeting. Twenty-four sixty, exceptional education. Five-one-one-three, public school open enrollment. Five-two-zero-zero, attendance. Five-three-three-zero, administration of medications. Five-five-one-two, smoking and use of tobacco. Five-five-three-zero, drug prevention. And item two, a new policy, five-six-three-zero-point-zero-one, appropriate use of seclusion and restraint. It is recommended that the School Board approve a new policy, five-six-three-zero-point-zero-one, appropriate use of seclusion and restraint, as presented and discussed at the August 11th meeting, and I so move.
Second.
Thank you. Board members, any comment on these? So any community comment on this item? Okay, seeing none, Dr. Eardle, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. Our next action item under Superintendent, Mrs. Casey, please.
Statement of the Board. The Wauwatosa School District Board of Education would like to take this opportunity to publicly recognize, apologize to the Superintendent for a comment made by Board Member Phil Croner at the July 14th, 2014 School Board meeting that reflected poorly upon the Wauwatosa School District and that could potentially foster unwarranted mistrust within the community. Moving forward, we will continue to be accountable for guiding and supporting the policy decision-making process that impacts students, staff, and the community. Adhere to professional Board decorum and encourage the open-minded exchange of ideas and opinions, and I so move.
Second.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Meyer. Board comments, please. Mrs. Casey?
Just to kind of let people know that we talked about this extensively at our in-service after our last Board meeting, and I felt it was a very open and thorough conversation. All Board members shared their opinions and concerns, and this is a reflection of what was heard at that meeting and, I think, a very fair solution. We wanted to take this time to recognize this and let people know that our intentions for moving forward. There's been a lot of time and resources spent on this, so I do not feel that conversation is warranted anymore, and I recommend that we move to roll call.
You're calling the question?
Yes.
Okay, I believe we need to vote then?
Point of order, I think I'd like, should be given the opportunity to comment on this motion.
I need to, I believe when the question is called, that we do the roll call vote.
It's a non-debatable motion.
Okay. Dr. Eardle, please.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
No.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes, motion passes five to one. And I'm sorry, I forgot to ask for community comment on this. We can still entertain community comment.
I believe once the question is called, it's
I mean, we could listen.
Right, I understand.
Do you want to just switch chairs?
No, I'm
No, you're helping. I agree.
I just remember what it's like to sit in that chair and
All right.
Help is, I welcome it, yeah.
I do, yeah. Okay, for reports, we have Dr. Eardle going, he's going to present the district development plan for 2014-15.
Thank you. Each year, we put out the district development plan at the beginning of the school year and routinely for the past five years, it's, we shared at a Board meeting prior to the start of the school year, so what the district development plan really is offshoot of our long-range plan. It's a process which we use to determine the steps the district that we're going to take this year and the progress that we're saying we're going to make and the goals that we're working toward. So we have, we have goals, initiatives, and we have projects. And then each year for the past five years, we do a report at the end that shows out and kind of our report card of how well we did on what we said we're going to do at the beginning of the year. So what I'm going to do is walk through a majority of our initiatives, goals, and projects and talk a little bit about them as we go through. Our goals remain the same, ninety-five percent proficiency on state assessments, or the state assessment, which is going to be the smarter balanced, or it's going to be the Aspire or the ACT at the high school level. But we want to get ninety-five percent of our students, not quite sure where the benchmarks will be, so we recognize that it's a stretch goal. But I think it's also important to remember with our goals, each of our buildings create school improvement plans that are in line with our district goals. That's one of the clear indicators. And now with our new evaluation system, the principals will then be, for their evaluation, will be in line with it as well, and the teachers' goals and SLOs are going to be aligned to it as well. So while we've been working toward that and consistently have that, I think we're going to have more assurance that that whole process is in place for this coming year. Eighty percent meeting map growth, it's a high target. I think if we get there, we may be one of the only school districts in the country that get there. But we want to make sure that our students are meeting their growth, and particularly in reading for the past five years, each single year, we've made growth on that, getting more and more students growing throughout the year. Our twenty-six ACT, I think the big challenge this year is going to be with all students taking the ACT, and this past year we had seventy-five percent of our students and the highest number of students ever taking it, but we'll be moving to all students and ensuring they're prepared, all students are prepared for taking the ACT. And our AP participation increasing each year, something, again, for the past five years, I think it has shown significant growth in all areas of AP, whether it's testing, the course, taking the courses, enrollment, et cetera, so we continue to grow in that area. Our ongoing initiatives, data-driven, I've mentioned the school improvement plans. I think it's also important to point out that everything we do in schools, we talk about using data, using data, and, you know, unfortunately in education, sometimes we seem to swing too far one way and try to get it back into the middle. And I think using data is critical, and we have opportunities and we make good use of it, but also that we focus on the other issues that go on in school, too. Mr. Meyer, the last couple of weeks, I keep going back to the point you made, I believe it was probably three or four years ago, and you just said about happiness. And at that point in time, I just kind of looked and like, what are you really getting at? And, you know, it keeps coming back, but there's something to be said for that, too. And I think, you know, I always argue that you show a student, a student gets an A, there's where they're going to find some happiness, too. So a lot of it's aligned, and there's a lot of pieces that go together, but the data-driven piece is what we're going to continue to work for. Our school improvement plans, like I mentioned, are all based on data. Culture and climate are other issues that we continue to work on as well that aren't as data-driven but are just as important. Our evaluation system being put in place for all principals and all teachers. We're taking that process, and we're going to make sure we do it well this year. We're going to take our time with it, make sure our teachers are comfortable with it, make sure our principals are comfortable with it. While it's not necessarily considered a pilot year, I think the first year of implementation, there's going to be things that we just need to look at and just take our time and make sure we do it well. Work methodically in the development of our evaluation system. Our grading transformation, I think there's an example where for a number of years, we've been working on different pieces of our grading transformation, and for our secondary schools, we're going to be implementing grade-wide, grade-wide changes for our grading. Wauwatosa Virtual Academy, that continues to grow. We're looking at an off-site area and more of a collaboration with Milwaukee County people and with the students that have participated at the detention center, maintaining their enrollment and their work they've been doing through the MCAP program. But I think as we, as I mentioned earlier, taking slow growth with our virtual academy, we're not out taking a thousand students at once, and I think we're growing incrementally, and I think that's the best way to do it. I know our vendor, I've seen emails from them saying they've never seen the successes like we've had with our kids in our virtual academy. So there's some good signs of what's going on, and our students are successful and gaining credits, and it's another opportunity for families within the Wauwatosa School District. Our PLCs and BLTs, those are not new acronyms, our Building Leadership Teams and our Professional Learning Communities. We need to keep a focus on those two areas. Mrs. Aronberger brought the BLT, processed to us a number of years ago, and it's our staff development process where we bring in our elementary and secondary schools. We train, train the trainer model, and that's how we work our major staff development pieces, and it's been extremely successful. We're going to continue to do it, continue to work on it and grow. And our PLCs, we can't lose focus of what those are. And last year was a strong point of saying, let's step back, make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing during that time, and that teachers are able to collaborate using data and information to improve their instruction. And it's, that time has become extremely critical and extremely important for what we're trying to accomplish in our schools. Common Core implementation, we're going to continue to work on Common Core in ELA and math. I know there's a lot of politics around Common Core right now, but I look at it, and we're staying out of the politics, and we're really focused on what's good for kids. And whether our standards change or they don't change, we're going to continue our work, making sure our students are getting rigorous and effective instruction in the classroom, and our curriculum aligns with it as well. What we're doing is just good practice, and our Teaching and Learning Department will continue down that path with their work in ELA and math. Communication is something we continue to work on. We had a survey this past year, we're going to use that survey data to develop improvement and work on improvement in communication in different ways. I think we recognize that communication changes and expectations for parents change and our community changes as technology changes, as families change, and looking at different ways to communicate, and what's communicated, I think, is really important, that we stay on top of that. And each year, we look at different ways and look for improvement on communication. And bullying prevention is something that we continue to work on. We want our kids to feel safe when they come into school, emotionally, physically, and making sure that bullying is not taking place in our schools. And having this on our DDP each year, I think, is important, whether or not there's a specific intervention that we're doing new, or it's continuing our work that we're already doing and trying to improve on it. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish this year in relationship to bullying. Further our tech integration, all the computers in the world and all the technology in the world is great. If it's not being used to improve instruction, it's a waste of money and a waste of time. And we need to make sure our teachers know how to use technology and are able to integrate it, make their teaching more powerful, and they're comfortable using it. So we're investing more in our instructional coaches with their training and background in technology integration, as well as to instructional coaches at the middle and high school levels that will help with that, help to further the integration. Our library and media specialists led by Jenny O'Dowd have been doing a tremendous job at the elementary level already. They'll continue that. Our library and media specialists at the middle school and high school with a couple of them new is another opportunity to continue to grow in that area as well. So we're going to keep working, and we know how technology changes, so we have to stay on top of it and make sure it's something that works well for kids. Equal Opportunity Schools is a grant-funded program that we're engaged in. Our first meeting is coming up, I believe, in two weeks to start that process this year, and really it's, it fits in with our goal related to rigor and AP. We're going to be working to integrate students that normally do not take AP classes and get them into AP classes and be successful. A lot of the research points to students that take AP courses and are successful in AP courses continue on to further their post-secondary education, and that's really what we want to do. We talk about kids leaving outdoors with an opportunity to go in any field they want to, whether it's college, the world of work, whatever they choose to do, we need to make sure all students are prepared to have that choice when they leave. This is another way of doing that. So we're excited about what opportunities that's going to bring, working with the EOS. Our Student Services Audit, there's going to be a three-year plan to carry out the audit that took place last year. There's a committee that's working on that. One of the steps that we've already taken is a restructuring of our Teaching and Learning Department that relates to the audit as well, but they're going to be putting in a three-year plan that will carry out over the next three years. So you will see this on future district development plans as well. And Curriculum Reviews, this year we're going to conduct a math audit that will lead into a curriculum revision for K-12 math and elementary music. We'll be looking at resources as well for this coming year. Our Projects, Communication, one of the projects we're working on is a marketing brochure that will be used across the district, and we've met with our company that we're working with to help us develop that. But we want to make sure that people not only know about us, but they can see us and they can feel us in marketing as well. So we're continuing that work through communications. Our Athletic Fields Plan that we have that was laid out, we're going to continue that work, and we will bring in proposals forward to the Board related to that plan. Our Comp Restructure, Compensation Restructure, while the Board approved what we had with our Compensation Restructure last year, we're going to continue our work with the committee that started that. We knew that when we went forward with it, there were going to be issues that came up and discussions, and we want to make sure that we're staying on top of our compensation plan, making sure that it's working well when questions do come up, we're flexible and we're able to deal with those. An example would be that when initially we went in, that we weren't going to adjust levels of people on a yearly basis. And I talked with our administrators and said, we are going to meet on a yearly basis to look at every single teacher to make sure that they're appropriately placed. And through our evaluation system, we're going to work to make sure that that is put in place. Anybody that has to wait three years to try to move to a higher level of recognition of their work, I think we're, I think we're setting ourselves up for failure. So it's just an example of where we need to be able to make modifications to that plan and make sure it's good for our school district and for our staff. Superintendent Advisory Committee, we brought that back last year, and I'm going to continue to use that as a group to communicate throughout the buildings with our teaching staff and with our support staff, and using a representative from each building to give me feedback on different things that are going on in the district and have some more open discussions. I think it was a good start last year with it. I want to grow that group to make sure that they feel empowered to provide the type of information we need for positive change in the districts as well. Our Long Range Plan, again, that's on there because we want to make sure it continues on and that we don't forget where we came from and where we're trying to go. The Long Range Plan started in 2007, is kind of reaching, it's reaching the end of its shelf life. So at some point, I think the direction we're going is clearly driven out of the Long Range Plan, but take a more in-depth look within the next couple of years is something that I'm going to recommend to the School Board that we do. And our Year-Round School Exploration, we're going to start that in earnest this year. I've been talking about year-round school, a number of you have been talking about year-round school for the past ten years, maybe, and we try to create opportunities in the district for choice within the public school system, and there is support for year-round school. I've had many conversations of parents that have an interest in it, and we're going to take a look and see how we can accomplish something like that within our school district. It's not a new concept, but it is taking place in other school districts, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can look at the successes and failures in other places and really look to see how it could fit within our system and how we can accomplish it. So I think we can do that, and I'd like to see that as an option for our parents. And that is a synopsis of our district development plan.
Thank you very much. Board members, questions and comments on this? Mrs. Casey?
I do have a quick question. How long have we, when was the last time we did a math review for the district?
I think for our elementary Um, I think for our elementary, um, but for secondary, it's been a long time.
For secondary, it, the math review has been quite a while. Our, we have some, like I want to say, since I wasn't here, but it's been a long time. At elementary, we have the, we have everyday math, we've had it for 15 years, but we had a review in there where the new version of everyday math was adopted, but that's been quite some time ago, both certainly before the Common Core.
Great, thanks. It sounds like it's needed warranted.
Well, we've looked at all the other major content areas, so math is when I first came and looking at what had been most recently reviewed, and next year, we probably will not complete a review, we will start with the external audit, so that is pretty extensive, and it's going to take a long time to look at all that, because we'll be looking at the entire math program kindergarten through 12th grade, which is like a huge undertaking. So next year really is about the external review and audit, and looking at that before we'll probably be able to even begin having any conversations.
Great. I'm glad we're starting that, thank you. And then my other comment was about the long-range plan. I, I like seeing that on here because it's so important, you know, when organizations have plans like that, that, you know, we keep them on the table and, and we, we go back to them and, and, you know, check our growth and, and measure our growth and, you know, check in and, you know, make sure we're, we're meeting our objectives. The one thing I would just kind of like to put out there is with everything going on, you know, teacher evaluation and compensation and Common Core and lots of testing, I think I'm hearing are going on for, for students, that we don't ever take enough time, I don't think, to stop and, and celebrate our successes, and so I, I try to, you know, say that to, to teachers and, and across the district that it's, it's so important, and I think, you know, we, we know that, but to just stop and actually do it is, is, is important, so I wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other board members?
Yes? I, I think that's an important point, your last point, Mrs. Casey, and one of the things I'm really going to try to get across this year, there's a lot of anxiety, and I, I guess it, maybe it's in education everywhere in Wisconsin, but I'm, my concern is what's going on in Wauwatosa, and a lot of anxiety about the new evaluation, about the new testing, there's a lot of newness, and, you know, doing this for a number of years, you just recognize that, do the, we, we need to do the best we can. If we get too worked up and too anxious and we don't focus on, on, you know, people doing their jobs well and enjoying doing their, their jobs, that we lose sight of what we're trying to accomplish with our kids, and I received a, an email from one of our administrators after the birth of his baby, and he talked about how in the hospital, they were integrating a new system, and it was the first time that the hospital workers had used the new data system and the new reporting mechanisms, and there was a lot of frustration, a lot of anger, a lot of angst, and as they're working through the delivery of a baby, and this comment was, there's such, such a strong tie to what's going on in education, but he said at the end, when the smile on the faces of all the people working in the hospital would tell you where their focus was, and it's on the customer. And I think we need to make sure we don't lose sight of what we're trying to accomplish in our school district, and I know I mentioned it earlier about the da, the data piece, but I think it's important we don't lose sight of our customers, and, you know, our, our customers, oftentimes we don't look at as our, as our, look at our employees as customers as well, but our employees are customers, our, our parents are customers, and our students are the ultimate customers, but we need to, we need to keep that focus in there as well, because I think we have incredible things going on in this school district, and it's a great school district. I want to make sure we stay that way through really challenging times in education.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Muffell?
Thank you. Very good point, Dr. Erdl, and I hear often from employees who are also longtime residents and have had their children go through the school district, so very good point there.
I have a question on board process and board retreat. So the board can be involved in, you know, policy support of the initiatives, typically we would have those in the summer, but I know our schedule has been moved back a little bit. When can we set something up, or, or I, I'm sure you're probably in discussions already, I just wanted to make the point, we're stretching, we, you know, and we want to make sure that we're setting the correct policies to further the goals.
I, I have been working on that. I've been working with Dr. Erdl, and I've been doing some checking on my own. I think after Mr. Cronus' presentation from the WASBE convention, where we talked about different modes of governance, it was a governance, that was a reminder of how many times we have done board development and tried to, tried to figure out the best way to lead as a group, and in conjunction with administration, but Mr. Meyer pointed out at that point in time that there is an approach we haven't taken, and that was kind of taking the lead of where our district is, all the things we just talked about, rather than an external model of a, of governance or whatever. So for me, what I'm thinking is, right now, the most critical thing is the facilitator, so I'm trying to be a little creative and, you know, talk about a retreat, I'm trying to be creative in finding that, so that we're not doing what we have tried to do over and over and over. So Dr. Erdl's working with me on that. I gave one suggestion to him that we're going to look at. It would probably require other districts coming together, because this individual that I was looking at is a national motivational speaker, but he's an educator, and is he a former athlete, I believe? I can't remember, but he does a lot of presentations to school boards around the country, and I think starting off with some new energy and that kind of an outside influence, so I know Mr. Meyer doesn't like that kind of stuff, I always think of you when I do this, but I know, you'll have fun. So anyway, that's where we're at, Mrs. Muffell, and I, I also know that you're a good resource for things like that too, but I, I kind of think we, we've done the WASBE thing, you know, we've gone through a couple of facilitators from WASBE. We've had former superintendents, so I'm really trying to find something new, so, but it'll be quick, or not as quick as possible, it won't be quick.
Well, and just to follow up to that is, this is an aggressive development plan. Every year, we have an aggressive development plan, and as a board, we have to respond more quickly to, you know, to assisting in that process, so if, I would just suggest if there are more priority projects, initiatives, that we should have focused on that topic. Prior to any larger, you know, discussion of, you know, how, how better to have board governance and, and work better together, I, I think we need to get moving on some of these, and, you know, the superintendent will help direct us.
Okay.
On what the administration needs there, but.
Okay.
But I, I do think we have to get started. I mean.
Okay.
Every child, every minute of every day and every year, and we have opportunities, so.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so there is the specific, and then there's the big picture of, of how we can, how we can operate better, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Bunn?
Yes, could you comment, maybe, Mrs. Ehrenberger, on the effectiveness of the PLCs? I know we're trying to maximize the effect, and what would that look like, and I guess the gist of the question, from where it started out years ago and to where it is now?
Well, one of the pieces that's reported on in the district development plan is a survey on PLCs that has tracked, the staff took those surveys at the end of the first year of PLCs, and they have continued to take that every year, so it's a, it's not a perfect measurement, but it, it is a constant measurement, one that we've given every year. So from a, you know, if we're looking for something that would quantify PLC measurement, that would show that each year that we've, you know, been increasing, I think this year is the first year that we maybe dropped down just a little bit from where we had been previously, but we were pretty close to four out of five, our teachers rating different things on the value of the professional learning community work. From anecdotally, we have, our teachers do journaling on professional learning communities. Every week when they meet as a team, they contribute to that journal, so, and, and there's a lot of feedback on professional learning communities, and I think that they become more effective as time has gone on. Last year, we reset what the, what an effective professional learning community looked like, so we started the year with all of our buildings, re-energizing professional learning committee work and emphasizing the need to be looking at data, to be talking about making adjustments and strategies, and, and doing formative and summative assessment. So, and also from an anecdotal perspective, we have seen, we have moved from having no common assessments, no common benchmarks, no common assessments across district, across building, or classrooms. So today, we have lots of evidence that we have common sets of benchmarks that are used across districts, departments, classrooms, we have common assessments that departments across district, across buildings, across classrooms are using to assess the learning of our students, so those have all been a result of professional learning community work that we wouldn't have engaged in six years ago.
There's also summaries that are posted each building, those summaries of their PLC work and is, are posted on the website, and that gives you another example of what they've done over the year, over the semester with their PLC time, so. I, I, I think back to when we did put it in place, and it wasn't, it wasn't as popular as I would have liked to have seen it amongst the staff, and I think it, now it's turned the opposite way where you get more, more staff members are looking for, they're looking for more time. So it's gone from, why do we have this time? What are we really going to do? And now we're going to miss this class time, when in fact we added a couple of days of instruction, but now it went the other way where they're constantly looking for more time to be able to collaborate. I think that I, I personally take it upon myself to be the keeper of that time and making sure that, making sure we're not disrupting that time, because that, like anything else, can become something it wasn't intended to be, where all of a sudden, well, let's hold a meeting during PLC time, well, let's do this during PLC time, and people get frustrated, because my answer is always no, that's time for teachers to collaborate, we're not going to do meetings, we're not going to do all these other things, and so really trying to hold true to what it's about is what we're trying to accomplish.
I would, I would add one more thing to that, and that relates to cross-district PLC work. When we first started PLCs, they, they were all happening within a building, so a department within a building, and in the last three years, the teachers, the need for them to meet cross-town, so we built into the schedule four professional learning communities where they meet cross-town PLCs, so East meets with West, Whitman meets with Longfellow, and then we have our elementary schools working in like pods of three, and that was generated out of a result of teachers understanding the need for them to have equity and to look for the common, to be able to develop those common assessments, look at that data, do some comparisons, so that was generated out of just the work hap, starting in buildings and then growing to be more district work.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Bunn, we can get you the copies of the surveys from the past couple of years, you have the current ones, and then you, and then you can kind of see the growth or the change or whatever, whatever it is. Mr. Meyer?
I'm going to speak to Dr. Erdl's reference of my promotion of giving students happiness skills. Our mission, deliver an outstanding education that equips and inspires our students to conquer their challenges now and in the future. Adult life is often filled with unhappy days and dark nights, and we as an educational institution, while these kids are still under our guidance, we, I believe, have a, a responsibility to provide them with outlets of fulfillment and happiness and joy. We're the, for most people, we are the last institution where they will be a member, and on such a full-time basis, there will be the caring approach that, and the time spent that we take, I mean, there's a lot of other wonderful institutions, but we have kids full-time, all day, five days a week for months, and for example, our curriculum review, the idea that this district promotes elementary music, that someone can find joy in singing, and then maybe someday they join the city choir or the church choir, and they find some happiness in their week from doing that, when a lot of other things don't go well. Our district focus on reading, the ability to know how to find a good book, that at the end of the day, no matter what has happened, or if it's the middle of the night and you can't sleep, you can pull your book off the nightstand and, and immerse yourself in some happy place for a while. I note that former President George W. Bush has taken up painting, and we have art classes, so I think it's very important that in addition to the purely academic accomplishment things, that we continue with these fulfillment skills that we, you know, provide to the kids, and that's one of the great advantages and strengths of our district, so that's to provide a little context, and athletics as well. You know, the idea of what it feels like to go out and run on the field and chase a ball, no, it's, it's assumed that everybody does it, but I, not everybody does it until they come to our schools and they have a chance to go do that, so that's all.
Thank you very much. Thank you for elaborating. Dr. Erdl, next time you refer to this, now you know what to say.
I'm thinking of the song, Happen to This.
Yeah, yeah, no, very eloquent as always, Mr. Meyer.
A book, a painting, a song, you know, a sports club, something that, that can, where a person can find something about themselves that feels good.
Yep, thank you. Other board comments on the district development plan? Okay. Is there any community comment on this, or staff kind of? Okay, I just want to briefly thank Dr. Erdl, the directors, administrators, and the staff for the teamwork on this and for the leadership on this. When we start out talking about numbers, goals, 95%, 80% and all that, it can start to look a little scary, I think, to teachers, especially when we talk about uncertainty with evaluation and compensation. So I was glad, Dr. Erdl, that you talked about the fact that these numbers and these goals are to drive us to a big picture, good outcome, and, and we have to, I think, keep reassuring the people that work here that they're not going to be compensated based on numbers, and I know we talked about it a lot when we implemented the new program, but it's, it's good to, to be reminded again about that. The MCAP, is it, at the detention center? I don't know if anybody had the opportunity to see the little news story on Channel 12. Was that Mr. Wayne Scott, Mrs. Wayne Scott? It was awesome. They, they visited the classrooms where the kids who came in, you know, 16, 17, 18 years old and hadn't read a book or picked up a book or couldn't read, and their reactions to being able to do that now, and just that partnership, I think, is amazing. Those kids literally, I think, a lot of times just did time and then they left. Some had a home district, some didn't, but when they leave here, you know, with a book in their hand, that they're able to read and, and the pride in that, so I, I just, I thought that was great. The marketing, do we still have a district marketing committee?
Yes and no.
Okay.
Do you want me to elaborate on that?
No, I, I would just be interested if, if there's a committee or whoever, you know, if, if we could get a report, I don't want to call it a report, if we could hear about the exciting things they're doing.
Yeah, there, there is a committee. We've, we've kind of stepped back with, Mr. Chandon was involved, and as, as he had left, and really trying to look at doing things a little bit differently, so there will be a point in this year where I'll certainly bring something forward to the board to discuss marketing and the process in the district.
Okay, and then my last question is superintendent advisory committee, how does a person become a member of that?
They. You're coming off guard, I'm trying to remember. I think we go through the, the principles. We put out anything for, to find somebody in the building that is interested and that wants to serve, and what, here's what the role is, and if they're interested, I think we generally would have had at least one person from each building that is interested in serving.
And do you, do you get new people from year to year?
Well, we just started last. Well, we just started last year again. So I would envision we'll get some people that will continue on.
Okay.
And then some new people as well.
And then that group will be different from the group that's going to be continuing the work on the evaluation.
Compensation, yes.
Compensation, okay. Okay, this is all exciting.
Can I make one other?
Please.
I just want to comment on something other, something else exciting. Melissa Nettishine was here this evening and doesn't know I was going to say thank you, but Melissa is being moved into the manager of Buildings and Grounds position, and we're thrilled to be able to have her with a couple of years' experience in the district, ready to be able to step into that position. And really, I'm personally excited about what she brings to us in that position and the leadership she has provided and will continue to provide even in a different position. So just wanted to publicly recognize Melissa for that job move.
Okay, so will we need a manager, Buildings and Grounds, or is she going to do it all?
We didn't tell her that yet. No, that position will be posted.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right. At this time, I would take entertaining community comment on any non-agenda items. Okay, seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. And Dr. Erdl, please call the roll.
Mr. Budd?
Yes.
Mrs. Casey?
Yes.
Mr. Cronin?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Muffell?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes. Thank you. You're adjourned.
I think this is my shirt is...